Regular school committee meeting will come to order. Roll call, please.
Oh, Mr. Caspian first.
(laughing).
Mr. Fadnais.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Caspian.
Here.
Dennis Angel.
Here.
Lord, you're ready?
Here.
Thank you. I did get a message that Mrs. Mills will not be here tonight. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D, executive session, and is in motion to go into executive session four. Discussions, consideration, labor contract discussions with Team Sisters Local 340 pursuant to One MRSA 4056D, and discussion, consideration, legal rights and duties of the school committee pursuant to One MRSA 4056E.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Unanimous. We will adjourn to executive session.
Is he coming for the seven o'clock meeting?
I doubt it.[96.11][96.11](laughing).
Looking for a motion?
Motion to come out of executive session. So moved.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor coming out of executive session? Opposed? That's unanimous.
Move that the school committee denies the grievance and authorizes the superintendent to provide the school committee's conclusions to the grievance and the union within the time period specified by the collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Moving to second a discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That's unanimous. Entertaining a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That's unanimous. Bit of a school committee meeting of April 28, 2014 will come to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Caspian?
Here.
Mr. Angel?
Here.
Ms. Florent? Mr. Mishu?
Here.
Ms. Mills? Mr. Moriarty?
Here.
Ms. Reddy?
Here.
Ms. Fadnais?
Here.
Ms. Lamb?
Ms. Labrou?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
President.
And I'm Chris Endorf.
Thank you so much. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D, adjustments to the agenda. There are none. Item E, consideration of minutes for 4:14, 15.
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second a discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That's unanimous. Item F, student rep report.
Good evening. The juniors at VHS are participating in the Smarter Balance testing this week. AP students are preparing for their AP exams this upcoming month, and the JMG program at VHS heads to Augusta tomorrow for a career development convention.
Thank you very much. Item G, superintendent's report.
Good evening. We all made it back from April vacation, as did most of our students. I do want to report that at the high school, the Smarter Balance tested began this week. We've probably had 25 to 30 opt-outs of the test and some unofficial opt-outs through non-attendance of school. I think that the technology piece hasn't been that big of a problem, but I do think that you're seeing, you know, not only a push locally, but a push really nationwide about the opt-out movement. Some of the other area high schools have as much as half or more, Chris, of students who are opting out of the test. And so it will be interesting to see how the state calculates all of this and the government. Today, Chris and I met with Benita Pathier from Senator King's office to kind of talk about Title I funding and the fact that we've gone from a million dollars to, you know, $675,000 in about a four-year period. It's interesting that when you do the mathematics on that, that the state in that four-year period of time has lost $1.8 million statewide in Title I funding. And when you look at that $1.8 million reduction over four years between Auburn and Bitterford, we make up half of that. So we'll be reaching out to the superintendent of Auburn as well just to kind of see if there's a way that we can have joint conversations. And with No Child Left Behind probably being reauthorized in Congress right now, there's a, what are they calling it, Chris?
Every child always, ECAA, something act. Every Child Achieves Act, I'm sorry. The ECAA will be the successor to No Child Left Behind.
And that looks like that will move through. So this is actually pretty good timing because if we can work with King's office and Colling's office, maybe we can work on getting a rule change on how that formula is calculated or at least some conversation about it. And lastly, you know, one of the things I'd like to say is I'm going to be sending a letter to the president of UNE, just really thanking her for the support that UNE has given to our students this year. The efforts around the district has really ramped up student involvement from UNE and the educational process, from the amount of student teachers that we have to a grammar fair that was, that happened at Deb's School. We have a math night on Thursday night, programs at the high school, programs at the middle school. There's some really good collaboration going on. And lastly, in tonight's meeting, we'll talk about the budget and where we stand, and we'll have a presentation on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Item H, committee reports, finance, building, and grounds.
The next finance, building, and grounds meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM, just before our school committee meeting on May 12.
Thank you. Curriculum?
Did not meet. Will meet May 12, and we'll be reporting under item number two in new business tonight.
Thank you. Policy?
Our next meeting is May 12 at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Item I, old business. One, consideration, revisions, policy, GCOA, supervision and evaluation of professional Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That's unanimous. Item two, consideration, overnight trip requests, Odyssey, The Mind, World Finals, BMS.
So moved.
Moving to second a discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That's unanimous. Item J, new business. One, consideration, overnight trip requests, senior class trip.
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second. Anyone from the public like to address this issue? School board? Yes.
I, just wondering where the trip is going. It didn't say on the form. What is the senior class trip this year?
What is Gunstock?
Gunstock.
It's in Gunstock.
What is Gunstock?
Can you come up with it?
Yeah.
Just.[592.16][592.16](laughing).
You can tweet it to us if you want.[599.04][599.04](laughing).
So what are they doing in Gunstock? Is that like a, is that a mountain? Like, what's the chain of two?
Good evening.
Hi there. They're going to Gunstock in New Hampshire. They're going to be doing some activities and camping out and spending the night, so.
Thank you.
Any questions on Mrs. Saroyz?
I have graduation in plan.[635.54][635.54](laughing). But there will be an administrator there.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That's a vote. Item two, report, district-wide report card. Mr. Keenan, Ms. Gendron, and Mrs. Kenny.
Mr. Caspian, I'll just introduce that while they come down to the microphone. In order to improve our academic program, we really feel like we need to do gap analyses. And I think educators aren't always comfortable with using and analyzing data. And so one of the first jobs of the curriculum committee this year was to develop an internal reporting system. Now, when we say a report card for the district, we don't mean this is what we send home to students. We mean that we make a biannual presentation to you and to the public to tell you how we are performing as a school, as a school district, K to adult ed. One of the things that we want to do is really provide a more holistic picture than the state's reporting system or the reporting system that the state has used in the past. We want to use a broader set of metrics. We want to provide us an opportunity to kind of take a snapshot of some of our key indicators for success, K through adult ed. And we also want to be able to assess ourselves internally and say, this is what we think we're doing really well, and we don't think we're doing such a good job here, and then use the, we're not doing such a good job here, to help direct our work as a committee and to report back to you and be accountable to you and to the public. We have three members of the committee who have volunteered to present the report card this evening. Each of you should have a colored copy of the report card in your packet. This will also be posted to the curriculum section of the district website. We have Kyle Keenan, who's the principal of our middle school, Deb Kenny, who's the principal of Bitterford Intermediate School, and Patsy Gendron, who's our Title I director and literacy coach, spanning a couple of different schools. And these folks are all members of the curriculum committee. So they're going to go through kind of slide by slide in fairly quick succession, and you can ask them any questions that you'd like. And we look forward to making this presentation to you twice annually moving forward.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. So what you have in front of you, as Chris mentioned, is a collection of data points and some demographic information that the curriculum committee has identified as being those, those things which best inform, those standards which we're using to do that internal assessment. And Mrs. Gendron, when she gets up, we'll talk a little bit about that at the end of the report. So just want to go through the slides very quickly with you to let you know what you're looking at and answer any questions that you might have. The first slide we're starting with is an assessment data slide, and this will be obviously something that will be populated next year. We're looking at our STAR assessment, which we're going to be beginning in the fall for the first time in September, and also Smarter Balance testing, which is happening right now. And so we don't have that data, but once we do, that data will populate this slide here. So we'll be using those two data points to start off with. The next slide continues with student data. We're looking at SAT scores. As you can see here, we have our Bitterford High School SAT scores, compared that with the state scores as well as the national averages. And just a footnote here around the national averages is that it's not an accurate comparison to compare the SAT scores from the state of Maine versus national averages because the state of Maine makes the SAT compulsory, that every student has to take the SAT, whereas those national scores are the scores of students who have opted to choose to take the, take the test. But we can at least compare here our Bitterford scores with our, with the scores of our other schools in the state of Maine. The next piece of data looks at our kneecap and the, again, the MSHA, which is the SAT test for the high school level. You can see here that the data is trending, that the percentage of students that are proficient or better in reading and math decreases. That's a, that's a universal trend for any school, but obviously something that is concerning to us and something that, as the curriculum committee looked at that, something that we certainly want to focus on in terms of making that trending line not quite so steep. The next slide is our graduation rates from the last two years. You can see here, this is some really positive data here as our Bitterford High School graduation rate has, continues to exceed the state rate as well as far exceed the national graduation rate. So that's really great to see. Along with that, you have the data on our college going rates, which has, for the last four years, been relatively stagnant. However, the students that are going onto post-secondary education from Bitterford High School, as you can see in the next set of data, those are really excellent college retention rates, students that are sticking through and making it through, returning to school as sophomores. And so that data is demonstrating that our students are resilient and certainly are going, prepared to be successful at that next level for the kids that are going. Any question on, these first three pages are really the student data pages. Any questions on those first three pages of the report?
I'll turn it over to Mrs. Kenny. Good evening.
Good evening. I'll be going over the next seven graphs, and it's more about the demographics of Bitterford. The first graph is the free and reduced lunch. And in this graph, you can see each school is listed, and it's the current school year that this data shows. Under enrollment is student enrollment, and students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch. And the third column is the percentiles. As you can see, the total, half of, more than half of our students are eligible for free or reduced lunch. The ELL profile, and that's English Language Learners, you can see the biography below. It represents kindergarten through 12th grade, and the vertical is the number of students. And the pie graph does a really nice job showing you the percentile of ELL students in our district. You can see that 28% is at BPS, and then 24% is at BIS, 18% is at BMS, 22% is at VHS, and 9% is at JFK. And this year, we do, did have, we do have a huge increase in ELL population, and it is, the ELL population's increased 70 cent, excuse me, 70% since 2009. And the students with the highest poverty rate are, they're students that are less likely to speak English as a primary language. And we do end up receiving less NCLB funding than we did five years ago. The next slide is the full-time teaching and faculty academic attainment. And you can see that 49% of the Bitterford staff has their bachelor's degree, 40% have their master's, 5% have their bachelor's plus 15, and 6% have their master's plus 15 or a CAS or their doctorate. The head of house gold demographic, you can see that 51% of our students come from a two-family home, and 49% come from a single-family home. And a parent is considered a guardian, a state guardian, biological parent or grandparent. So just about half of our students come from a one-parent home, which is... Okay, our next slide, well, not slide, but our next graph is identified disabilities. And we have 10 disabilities shown here, and there's a breakdown of the students under each disability. And if you look at the biography, you can see that since 2011, things have been pretty consistent up until this school year, and we do have a significant increase in special ed students that we're servicing this school year. In the last slide are the homeless students, and shows the last five years. And there's been an increase of students that come from a homeless situation, an increase in the last two years. And when we talk about homeless, we're talking about families that live in shelters, hotels, or with other families. So we've seen that rate also increase. And the behavior infractions by the school year, again, this is the last five years, and you see the trend decreasing. And again, this is putting in our, in K through five, our PBIS, Positive Behavior in Health Supports. And it, I know the middle school had put in seven habits, and I know that they're also working on restorative justice practices, BMS and VHS. They're utilizing and getting training as well with restorative justice practices for the future. So at the bottom, underneath the line graph, it shows from 2011 to present, you know, what insubordination, some of the behaviors that is dealt with. And, you know, from threatening to fighting to simple assaults, you know? And you can see that the trend is going down because, you know, they're making better choices and, you know, definitely held accountable, but making really, you know, you're going to see that, I think, decrease even more as restorative justice, you know, training for middle school and high school comes up. Does anybody have any questions regarding?
Questions, Tony?
Yeah, I have one question about our student demographic. We have single parent, two parent. Do we have any information on foster parents? How many kids are living in foster care? I know the state has released data that we have 1,900 students, or 1,900 children in our state living in foster care, and I'm just curious to the percentage in our district.
Fifteen?
Fifteen students presently.
Any other questions, Bill?
Deb, the homeless student numbers, that doesn't reflect of who we know of. Couch surfing, right? That doesn't?
No, we have no idea. Usually when a family comes in and they're living with another family, we have to get the landlord to give us a letter saying that he is aware that that family's living in the same apartment.
Any other questions?
Bill, and I think what you stated is, when you said couch surfing, is, again, the fact that one could say, wow, there are 35 homeless students in Bitterford at 1.5% of our population. But there is also a huge population of students who aren't reported as homeless but bounce around from wherever they can find a place to sleep that night. And, you know, not all data comes out. And so I think that's an important thing for us to know, for the public to know, is that there's that percentage too.
Yeah, I know some of the demographic, demographic information, you know, can look, you know, a little on the negative side, but I can tell you, our students are doing great and they're very happy to be at school. So whatever situation they're coming from, they're happy and they're learning.
Before we have Patsy come up and address, Debbie, is Patsy doing the next section? Okay. I just wanted to, for folks who aren't on the curriculum committee, just make a quick point, and that is, our original intent was to take all of this data and create an algorithm and plug it in with student achievement, and to be able to say to you that students who are homeless or students who have been in three fights, take the bus, and live on the east side of town are more likely to do X. But we realized very, very quickly that, you know, teams of psychometricians and EDDs and PhDs with eight-figure grants from the federal government developed these things over the course of years. And so what we're doing is really just providing you with some context, and we're allowing you and the public to make your own conclusions. I really want to caution the causation-correlation mistake, which is to say that because a student has X condition or Y family condition, that therefore their achievement will. Now, sometimes we can make a very, draw a very straight line between those two, but in a lot of cases, we have more than one factor kind of at play. And so I just want to kind of caution you about how you use this data.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Okay, this, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. This next page shows a couple of graphs regarding, regarding our Title I funding yet again. We can see that the green line represents the percentage of students that receive Title I services, and over the last five years, you can see that that number has remained fairly steady, while at the same time, our allocations, as has been mentioned several times tonight, have decreased dramatically throughout the last five years and had some very impactful, very strong impacts on our programming. The graph below that continues to show the decrease in the Title I funding, and at the same time, however, that our free and reduced lunch numbers are growing. Are there any questions around that? I feel like that's probably, that graph has been around, and you've probably seen it a couple of times, I'm not sure, so. If you turn to the next page, this is a page where Chris was talking about earlier, that we've identified nine standards that we're assessing ourselves on, and we've come up with some possible likely correlating data for each category. And you can see that we have aligned curriculum, effective instruction, student assessment, so on and so forth, and the, the, excuse me, the data points that we're hoping to gain this information from, to use to help us make some decisions. If you look at the last page, this page represents a summary, like a description of each standard, and the curriculum committee's internal assessment of our district. You can see right off the bat that we've assigned some numbers, some numbers to each one of these, and the aligned curriculum is in red only to indicate that we feel as a committee, which, by the way, the committee was representative of all different levels of staff, including parents and board members, we feel that the most pressing concern is the aligned curriculum, and that's going to be our primary focus for the next year, two year and a half. Do you have any questions about either of those pages?
Any questions? Just to draw that line backwards where Patsy said we're going to focus on that aligned curriculum, if we go back to a previous graph and we look at our, our math and our English, as Kyle said, this is a universal trend in school departments, rich and poor, high performing and low performing, that kids do better in the elementary levels than they do in the high school levels. But you can see that our math scores are kind of consistently lagging behind our reading scores, and so the next thing we'll take up as a committee is our math curriculum. It's time for, for a review of that, that program, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the public have any general questions about what we just went Any more board questions? Sure.
I'm actually part of the curriculum committee, and I think, this was a lot of work putting this together, and I think it was more or less to say, it's more than just test scores that conduct the needs of a district. I mean, you can look at an ABC score, but that's not the little snapshot that we get. And I think when we came up with this report card, we were thinking in mind of being more transparent, having the public see when we're spending money, for instance, when budget season comes, we can say why we have these needs, whether it's how much, how many homeless people. Like you said, there's no correlation, but we, we have to say, this is what we're up against. How many non-English speaking students we have? Why would we have to put money in the budget for that? And it's just, it just makes people accountable, and so we can direct our professional development days, our money that we're budgeting for things, towards this report card. And it... And it's going to be online, parents can look at it, see where we are, see where we're going. So we're not just looking at a school and saying it's a C school, we're looking at everything else that's happening in that school. So I think it was great work, and it isn't something that was a requirement for districts to come up with this type of report card, but it's work that we thought was important, and it's important for the public to know where we're at as well.
Thank you. Bill?
I'm happy that Lisa brought that up, because that would go into kind of what I was asking earlier with a position that we have here at the high school that is very important to the student body, because in, we don't have any data in this report about students that are couch surfing. And for people who will watch this at home, or couch surfing is when you don't have a home to go to, but you're living at a friend's house on the couch. But Mr. Fletcher, a staff member that we have here at the high school, and his position is geared towards many different things, but one of those things is making connections to students who are possibly in that situation, and helping them to make sure that they excel here at school, and help at some point with, you know, services that they could have at home. So I'm happy you brought that up, because that...
Thank you. Anyone else? Jeremy?
Just want to thank the curriculum committee and Chris for taking on this task. Any good organization has to have internal measures on how, internal processes to measure their growth and the decisions that they make. And this is a tool that can be used from budgeting to professional development to staffing levels. And it doesn't mean that it's a report card that's static. It means that there's a whole list of all the data to consider, and when something new, the federal government, or the state, or internally, we change about our system, we can say, hey, we use this to measure this. Or this is a, is an example of how we look at a particular issue. And I think that, you know, when you look at the back page, on a four-point scale, we've been pretty tough on ourselves. And so it's not like we say, here's a report card, and we're getting all fours. I think we've given an honest assessment, because we know that there's work that needs to be done. But now this gives us that stat, snapshot to move forward. And for everybody who worked on that, really nice job with transparency and getting it out there in the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Item three, consideration, teacher evaluation, PE, PG manual.
Actually, just a quick point of order, Dennis, excuse me, I'm sorry. On the teacher evaluation piece, I'm not seeking a specific motion tonight, rather than just to update the school committee. But part of that, Dennis, that's attached, is the principal's evaluation, which I would certainly welcome a motion on tonight. So do you mind if I just start with the teacher evaluation piece and just give you an update? Thanks. So just as a quick refresher, the state of Maine has passed a law to be in compliance with the accountability standards of No Child Left Behind, which requires us to have a formal teacher and principal evaluation system. And the law required us to form a committee that involved teachers, community members, school committee members, administrators, and representatives from the teachers' association to serve on this committee to develop a teacher evaluation plan. I think, at the end of the day, one of the primary functions of this plan is to ensure that principals are in teachers' classrooms, and to give school committee members and superintendents an ability to non-renew what we could safely call tenured teachers. So in other words, right now, for the public who may not be aware, when a teacher's hired at Bedford High School, for example, at the, at the end of each year, the superintendent has the opportunity to renew or non-renew that teacher without additional cause. We don't have to say to the teacher why we didn't renew that person, or kind of, you know, come up with a litany of reasons. And we have that right for three years. But after that, teachers are on what's called continuing contract, and that is indefinitely. This law provides us with the opportunity, through our teacher evaluation system, to non-renew continuing contract teachers without additional cause. So if we had a ten-year veteran teacher who really was not performing up to standards, and we followed the, kind of the precepts of this teacher evaluation system that we've developed collaboratively with the teachers' union, and after two consecutive years of receiving an ineffective rating, that teacher can be non-renewed, it's not grievable, and there's no additional cause required. So what I really want to draw your attention to is this, guys, because there's been a couple changes in the law. Originally, we were going to be seeking formal approval tonight to, for a first reading and then a second reading, because this, this was originally going to be due to the Department of Ed June 1st. But they have applied for from the feds and received a one-year extension. And what that allows us to do is to pilot the system, to work out the kinks. It's enormously complicated, and involves educating 250 staff members on what is and isn't required of them in this system. So the recent law change allows us to basically pilot it for a year. And while we've had school committee representation on this, I want to draw your attention tonight to two things, two things. I think most of this is pretty run-of-the-mill, best practice, there's kind of other models out there that we've adapted to meet our needs. But I want to make you aware of, in case you had any kind of discomfort or wanted to explore further during our pilot. And the first is, is what we'll call 80/20. So the state requires us to have at least 20% of a teacher's annual rating be based on student growth. I want to just let that sink in. So student growth must be a significant factor, that's right from the statute, in the teacher's annual rating. That, that could be between, Lori Jo?
Measured how?
Okay, right. Absolutely, fair question. So it could be between 20 and 100% student growth. Now, the way that we are measuring it here is a recent law change requires us to use the current MEA. So for grades three through eight and 11, that will be the Smarter Balance Assessment. Lori Jo will be half of our student growth measure. And then the other half of our student growth measure will be what's called the STAR Assessment, which we'll be implementing next year. You saw that on the, on the report card. So what I want to bring to your attention tonight, and you don't have to comment on it tonight, you can let it marinate, because I'll be coming back for a formal vote next year in the pilot. But I want to, if we need to correct course, please let us know tonight, is that we, you know, each one of these decisions we made, we did the thumbs up, thumbs down with 19 people in the room, and we got all thumbs up on this, is that for student growth, it will be 20% of a teacher's Summit of Effectiveness rating. And the other 80% is effectively what their principal observes and reports. So if there's any kind of visceral discomfort with that, if people are thinking 20% isn't enough, we can certainly make that change and explore what that looks like. But it cannot be, by statute, less than 20%. So I can't have a school committee member say to me tonight, I'd like 0% student and 100% principal. So that's the first piece, and you can certainly comment on that now or wait. But the other piece is, I wanted to let you know that this document, or an edited version thereof, will be submitted to the state for kind of their first read by July 17th of this year. We have to make application for a pilot here. And while we are able to make a change in the first year, so we can come back and revisit those percentages or something along those lines, I'm not sure how much flexibility we're going to have after we make that application to the state. Eventually, we'll need to provide them with documentation proving that you voted on and endorsed this plan, but we have another year until that's required, so we can test it and work out the bugs. Bill?
Well, we heard a little while ago from the superintendent that we have students who are opting out of Smarter Balance.
Correct.
And that's happening all across the state, I'm assuming, right?
That's correct.
So how, how is that going to work?
Our next, our next meeting of that PE, PG committee is May 6th, and we have a lengthy agenda, and one of those, one of those questions is going to be, what do we do in the absence of the STAR data? I'm sorry, of the Smarter Balance data. That is not an approved bill. It's LD 38, it's expected to pass, it's supported by the MDOE, and it came out of the Ed Committee with unanimous support. But assuming that passes, Bill, we'll have to use that Smarter Balance data. And what it means for those 35 or so kids who haven't taken the test and their teachers, I'm not sure. And I think if we ask the state, they're not sure. They have one person, one person that runs this entire program.
Like a definitely border on being unfair to some of the teachers.
We'll have to come up with an alternative.
Any questions from anyone in the public? Anybody else on the board with questions of Chris? Seeing none, let's move on to the principal's evaluation.
Sure. Also attached to that packet is a principal's evaluation system. This mirrors very closely what our friends in RSU 21 are using for their system. It's based on kind of the Charlotte Danielson model, wherein the superintendent would use a kind of a rubric and work with the principals on an annual basis to evaluate their effectiveness. It's based on the ISLEC leadership standards. And I am seeking approval of this plan. If there are any questions about it, we certainly have the time to revisit it. But this is something that I've met with the principals about, we've talked about, we've formatted their, they universally support it, superintendent supports it.
Motion to accept and approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Anyone from the public that would like to address this? Always shaking of heads. Anybody from the board? Bill?
Chris, you said that the superintendent endorses, can we hear him say that he endorses it?
You have my stamp of approval.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all of you, please raise your hand. Opposed? That's unanimous?
Thank you.
Item five, discuss, discussion consideration, FY 16 budget.
Okay, so finally I get a chance to talk tonight. Chris spent a lot of time behind the microphone, I thought. It's all right. So just a little bit of a timeline here, is a few weeks ago, around the 1st of the month, we passed on a budget to the city council that had a Tier One reduction in it, based off some enrollment numbers. And as we went to the council a couple of different times, I kind of had a feeling that I, there had been some areas where I haven't presented our situation well enough to talk about some of the consequences of not raising the local allocation, looking at a budget that operates well below EPS, which the state kind of sets as a bar for schools. A week, a week ago, just before vacation, the council asked if I could come back with a plan that said, well, what if there was zero, what would zero tax increase look like? So let's kind of take a snapshot of where we are right now. We're at an increase of spending, budget to budget, at .28%, or increased by $95,000 from the number of last year. There is a local tax increase in the budget that we've put forward of about 1 and 1/2%. Okay, so why the difference? Well, the difference is there based on the fact that we lost $318,000 worth of state subsidy when the mill expectation was changed from point, from 8.48 to, from 8.1 to 8.48. Valuation is based on three years, so the state looks at the land value in Bedford over a three-year period, and we still have a year that has the Merck property in there, so we have a little bit higher of a valuation. And we've talked about the numbers and the difference that it makes. So when we come up to a situation where we've put a budget together of where we stood right now with a Tier One reduction, and an increase of $95,000 budget to budget, and yes, there was a reduction in state aid. We have a budget that right now, in FY 15, the year we're working in, the state says that we're operating about $600,000 below EPS. The budget that we put forward would have us operating lower than that, at $860,000 below EPS. If we had a situation where we were asked to go to zero tax increase, and we've talked about Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, we'd be operating a million dollars under what the state says is essential, essential program and services, EPS. So we're operate, we're right now 600,000 below essential. So as we look at this figure and you say, okay, we still struggle, we have a challenge with a budget from year to year, where does this put us in the future? What, what happens in the future around local allocation? You've heard me talk about operating under the local or operating under EPS. So right now, the state, when they sent out their number to us based on subsidy, they said, City of Bedford, to be raising 100% of your local allocation, you need to raise 19.645 million dollars. Last year, we raised 19,260,000. We were right at about their 100% mark. Now, there's a law out there that says, up until next year, you can raise below what the state says. Have that ability. Next year, you have to raise EPS. There's no way around that, unless you're a percentage-for-percentage reduction. That means city raises 2% below, then you'll get 2% less subsidy. So raising lower also helps lower your subsidy in a subsequent year. So why is that important for us? When you look at what the state did this year with changing the mill rate, why did they change the mill rate? The cost of education went up statewide, there's no additional funds put into general purpose aid. Thus, in order to get the end result, property owners need to come up with more. So shift to the property owners away from the state. Shifting away from that 55% mandated by law onto the property owners. Probably one of my downfalls is I'm sometimes too responsible with money. I have a hard time with this. I have a hard time not saying, how can we do better? Probably done, I think the principals have done too good of a job, and I've pushed them too much. But we have a situation where what is proposed right now in the budget with a $95,000 increase, and a 1.4 something to the taxpayer, is about a quarter of a million dollars below what the state says we should raise. If we went to a situation where as the public demanded a 0% tax increase, we would need to be $559,000 below what the state's telling us. So we escaped this year. Let's say that scenario plays out, and we get through the year. Now let's glimpse into the future. And let's say that we're in the second year of the governor's budget. So a budget usually lasts two years, and GPA amount, and Alan can probably help us with this, typically doesn't change a lot in year number two. The budget is the budget over two years, unless there's a big windfall and something happens. Yet we all can probably bet that the cost of education statewide is going to go up next year, too. So what if the DOE, because there is no general purpose aid increase, says to us, we have to raise the local mill expectation another .38 points, just like they did this year, for a $50 million shortfall, or a difference, not shortfall, difference? What would that do to us based off new property valuation? Fact that we're not going to have that subsidy for those two buses in there, which is $162,000 of that $9.8 million. And now, you take into the fact that your, could be a quarter of a million dollars or $559,000 below what they said you should be raising. or $559,000 below what they said you should be raising. That number locally, based on those things happening and looking at our valuation, could be a sign where they say, your state subsidy's not 9.8, it's 9.1, and your local allocation just went to $20 million. What I've heard from people over time and what I've heard from people in whether that be in other communities is, board of people not like the years where there's, phew. And we can see it coming. We can kind of say, this could happen to us. So I haven't done a very good job letting you guys know about that, in my opinion. I'm not sure I conveyed that well to the council at first, so I put these memos together to say, hey, this kind of could be there. Let's talk about that. Now, at the same time, I think when we made some Tier One reductions, I do believe that those were based off enrollments and those were things that could happen. What I do think that we need to consider is that if and when more subsidy came because of a change at the state or if we made some decisions or the city or the voters made some decisions of, as we get closer to raising the local allocation, we do have to have some considerations about the center of technology. We took a couple of things. We took a guidance counselor from there that probably stressed the high school a little bit. We also know that one of the things that happened here is you wound up building a $34 million renovation. We have a building in need. And so, we do have to look at that in the future as we move forward. We also have a very nice report card that you put out. It says we have some populations and some educational programs that we have to consider here. We're a district that needs to use the funds that we have and use them wisely to generate more subsidy in the future. And we have to be smarter and one step ahead of the curve on all of these things. So if we go back to how this all came about and the feeling that I didn't do well enough of a job explaining this to the public because I don't want to be in a position a year from now where someone says, well, how didn't you tell us this? We talked about Tier One, and so far right now, we know that a Tier One adjustment has been made. And we put together Tier Two and Tier Three. And a few weeks ago, we talked about Tier Two and Three. And as we got to the end of Tier Three, I would actually have to recommend to you to change graduation requirements to make that happen. Chris and I sat in the office and we're like, what, where are we going? Many people will say, well, in a budget that large, there could be more things cut. It's important to remember that when you make, when we're making those statements, that there are more things to cut. We're saying we're changing graduation requirements. But it's also important to know that we're not raising the required allocation and we're operating under EPS. So we're a pretty efficient bunch here. We're not even operating to essential programs and services. So as we put the list together and people said, so what would happen if you took that to zero? I was, you know, still a ways away. I was about $80,000 or $90,000 taking that to no tax increase. And I said to myself, what would I do? I've already said, can't cut any more teachers. Can't look at programs. Don't have enough for our kids as it is. So I said, how would we go about this in a way, if presented, that we don't impact teachers in the classroom, positions that are in an educational setting? And the only thing that I'd have to recommend is we'd have to change our start times, reduce bus drivers, and we'd have to have a situation where, you know, the high school would stay about the same time. But we know there's a lot of conversation out there about start times anyway. The middle school would work out pretty good because the middle school in BIS could start around eight o'clock. But our elementary schools would need to start 8:30, 8:40. That's late for parents trying to get to work. What I'm trying to convey is that I think we've taken way, way too much in some places. And we're at the end here. If more funds are needed, and I contend that they're not because we're operating below EPS. We've done our job. We've been very conservative. We continue to think outside the box. We continue to try to bring in revenue. We need to invest in our buildings so that they don't continue to fall down. That if we moved any further and if there was that request, I would have to recommend to you guys that we looked at start times because that doesn't take a teacher out of the classroom. I think there's a lot of problems with that. We talked about when we changed like five minutes last fall. We had some, a lot of conversation about five minutes. We'd be talking 40. But if we're put in those situations, I think as a board and a superintendent, I'm saying to you guys, can't take more teaching positions. We just can't do it. We have to think about things differently. We also put some information in there about each budget category and kind of where our percent of spending is compared to a lot of the districts in the state. And I think that, you know, you'll see on things, if you go through that, we're pretty frugal in most of the areas. And so, I think that we have to be very careful. We have a couple of public meetings coming up. The, you know, the first reading, the second reading, public forums. We may be asked to come back by the council and reduce more. But the council has this exact same information. I'm telling you tonight because the span of time between the two meetings with the council and the last time we met as a group, this has happened in between. And I really haven't had an opportunity to not even present a Tier Four or talk to that. I needed to come up with something to say, this is what, this would be my, if we were forced to do that, this would be my recommendation to you guys. But this is where we are. And I really wanted to make sure I had an opportunity publicly to talk about the concerns on the local allocation piece. It's a challenge for us because we have high property value. And when you have a state formula and a system that continues to want to push the burden onto local property owners, that puts us in a problem. These are the lowest funded education budgets in the last 10 years. The number's going down. Yet, we know every cost go up. You know, there was some earlier talk about how one party wanted to put $50 million in and the other one to put 25 in. And then, there was a plan against the governor's budget that came in with a number less than what people had talked about beforehand. Bitterford's in a unique situation because we know that there's a high level of need for students. There's a high level of poverty here. And at the same time, there's some very expensive coastal properties that drives that property valuation up. I think one of the other things that you look around at a lot of districts, and this is something for us to be proud of, but when you look around at our overall facilities and you look at districts that have a newly renovated high school and a middle school that are nine years apart, I would challenge it to see that there's another community in the area that has their two largest buildings be so new. And a lot of that has been taken on by the local taxpayer, especially here on this project, when you're looking at a little over one mill being based off the high school piece. And I think you'll see that when you look at our debt service, we're right there at the top. So, opening up for questions, comments. We've had no discussion about Tier Four, but a plan needed to come together as an option.
Let me go to the public first. Anyone from the public with any comments on this? Back to the board. Tony?
Can you explain the last page on the totals? It says Bitterford, 77.26%, and then there are communities well above 100. That total is percent of what?
Okay. I got to get back to you on that one.
Okay.
The total on that, my guess is that's the total overall budget within categories EPS. I mean, there are a lot of communities. I think that last year I put out a slide to you. If you look at the number of communities that spend above EPS, there's only a handful of the major communities. Lewiston-Auburn, Augusta, Bitterford, Auburn, your major service center communities that spend less than EPS. You take Portland out of whack because they spend about $12 million more than what, you know, they need to. But they have so many school sites. You take, you look at EPS numbers and you look at, say, Saco, $3 million over. One of the things that we studied last year, Tony, is that when you looked at, like, the USAID today puts out, like, they put out the top 20 high schools rankings in the state of Maine. And then you looked at all of those districts and the amount over EPS they were spending. And all of them were, you know, but like one were a million dollars over. It was substantial. I think that when you look at your, one of the things that Heidi could say to us as special ed director is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Heidi, but our largest number of referrals, new referrals coming from the middle school. Okay? So our highest number of new referrals is coming to the middle school. What has happened at the middle school over the last four years? Lost Title One. Right when I came onboard, we had that big cut and you lost the core reading programs. They don't have the interventions. So as a teacher, what is the intervention available? Special education. And we sit here before you tonight saying, oh yeah, this doesn't even talk about the teaching position in Title One that we lose because we lost funding.
Other questions? Bill?
I just, I just have a comment. I believe, I guess I could do a question first. I believe the council has sent it on for public discussion, right?
Correct.
At our approved Tier One cuts.
Correct. They've sent it on. I was away last week and they knew that. And they really wanted to see, they wanted to see what it would look like, too. I don't think anybody's out there saying, hey, go do this, go do that, take that away. They want to see that. They understand the position we're in. I think we're all in this situation together. We're probably in the same situation that a lot of communities are. Look at a lot of communities. If you looked at that table that was, there was an article in the Press Herald and it looked at all the local communities in the area of what their budgets were up and down. There wasn't one of them that was up only $95,000. Not a one of them. You know, I think if you, if you look at the papers and, you know, we looked at a situation where we got some really good news about health insurance. And I, and I'm one that tends to read every local education article that I can possibly find online. What do we do? We turn that right into savings. If you look at what many of them did, people added positions. Unanticipated windfall in health insurance. No, it's just a cost avoidance that happened. So, answer your question.
Yeah, the council, when they received the information last time, of course, there's so much information in this packet. They certainly wanted to digest it and then hear back what the school board thought and what the public thought, so. Lisa, was your hand going up last time? Okay. Anybody else? No, thank you, Jeremy. It's a very detailed presentation, a lot of information and plenty to digest.
Thank you.
Item K, resignations, nominations, appointments, transfers. Cynthia Volin, ESL teacher, BMS, BHS. Celine Dumaine, Gift and Talent teacher, BIS, BPS. Appointments, Richard Dakota, part-time administrative assistant, food service. Looking for a motion?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That's unanimous. Item L, public participation. Anyone from the audience would like to address the school board on any issue that we haven't covered tonight? Seeing none. Item M, communications. Bill?
Probably not the most formal guy in the world. So, bear with me. Some of you know that. Sorry. I am going to ask the chair to place this resolution on the agenda for consideration of the school board. The school board would be voting on a resolution that has been sent out to all of the school districts across the state asking the Maine State Legislature and Governor Paula Page to recognize a law that was passed back in 2004 where the state of Maine would fully fund 55% of the cost of public education. So that's what I'm going to ask the chair if we can put that on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Dennis?
I'm going to go back to the budget. What I want to do is I want to take this time to apologize to my fellow committee members, teachers, staff, parents, and most of all, the students. I voted for the Tier One reduction after a very good budget was presented to us by everybody involved. I said I would never vote for things like this. I went against my principles. I bowed down to pressure, knowing that the city council wanted the reductions. It is our job as a committee and as a committee member here to make sure we have adequate funding for our children, to give them the education that they need. I believe in this school system. I believe in all of you. I believe in this committee. I will not vote for any more reductions. And I'm sorry I voted for the Tier One reduction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on, end executive session. Discussions, consideration of student eligibility pursuant to one MRSA 20A 5201. So moved? Moved in seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That's unanimous.
Are we coming back after? We are?
Two minutes. No, we do not need, we can adjourn out of the section just because something I can do.
Okay. Thank you very much.